I'd like to call this meeting of the mayor and city council, May 6, 2019, to order. If you'll please rise for the pledge allegiance led by me and invocation by Mr. Trippick.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the digital with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come to you, Lord. We thank you for all of our blessings. We thank you, Lord, for the beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for our community that you've given us to live in, Lord. Father, as the mayor and council convene tonight, Lord, we ask you that your hand of direction be upon them. God, we just ask you to bless this meeting and everything that's said and done will be acceptable and pleasing in your sign. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
This gets us down to item number four, citizens' comments. If you have something to address the council with, if you'll please come to the front, sign, state your name, address, and try to hold your comments to about three minutes. We would be greatly appreciated.
Good evening.
Jim, can you?
I'm short. My name is Carolyn Gray. I live at 316 Bledsoe Street in Carrollton. And I would rise tonight to make a request of the city to sponsor the 65th anniversary reunion, be one of the sponsors, of George Washington Carver High School, which will be next year. So, we have enjoyed some support from the city. For our 50th, it was quite good. We don't have a budget yet, but I would like to come back with the proposal because, as you know, the city of Villa Rica is celebrating its 25th anniversary of the Dorsey Festival, and it is the only event in the entire county that acknowledges an African-American contribution to the city-state and the country. So, we would like you to pick up slack and acknowledge George Washington Carver High School because many of your citizens that are presently over 60 attended George Washington Carver High School and had a wonderful time.
Ms. Gray. I'm all for that. I just have a favor. I've always wanted a George Washington Carver, like, museum, not a, you know, if you could taught to your classmates, I think it'd be great to taught at the school system. It's something I've always thought would be really cool and neat and be historical, so that's the, I ask you just to pass that on to your classmates. And we can talk to Mark Albers together. I'd love us to do something like that.
We've been down that road about 10 years ago. But we, oh, I didn't, yes. Well, we would, we will readdress that with Carrollton City Schools because at one time, they did promise us the use of the old Carver High Building as a museum site, but that kind of fell apart, you know, some on our end, but some on their end, too. So, 65 years, we'd like to have something to leave as a legacy for all of the great people that graduated from Carver High School. So, I will be in touch.
Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Item number five is the minutes. I assume everybody read their packets and got any changes or approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Mayor and council announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I just asked that we move that as the last agenda item before adjournment when we do the agenda. We could.
Have a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We gonna include city manager comments on that, too? Okay. Item number eight, approval of agenda items for consideration.
I move that we approve the agenda items.
Motion and sec.
Proclamation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. With the...
I withdraw that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as set with the addition of the art takeover day and printer sale. Let me rephrase. I'd like to approve the agenda as set with the addition of printers' A.L. Day as item number one and everything else moving down from there.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve additional adding printers' A.L. Day to item number one going forward. Am I correct? Everybody in favor?
I'll give a second.
Excuse me. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, sir. All right. Printers' A.L. Day. Roy, I guess your response from?
All right, guys. We'll get this started here. I'd like to read a proclamation for printers' A.L. Day in the office of the mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company is the first craft brewery in Carrollton, Georgia, and whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company is the only brewery in West Georgia, 30 miles in any direction, and whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company originates from four generations in the printing industry, with more than 30 years spent in Carrollton by founder Greg Smith, running his own company, Printed Specialties, and whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company founder Greg Smith discovered a way to pair his love of brewing with the ideal location for a brewery. Behind his printing shop and Printers' A.L. was founded, and whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company thrilled to share their craft brewing passion with the city of Carrollton and the West Georgia communities, and whereas Printers' A.L. Manufacturing Company celebrates its second year in business on April 29, 2019. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Carrollton hereby congratulate you and deem April 29, 2019 as Printers' A.L. Day in the city of Carrollton.
Yeah, I can represent all of us.
Well, look at that. I know, I know. I'm sorry.
That gets us down to Resolution 11-219, Art Takeover Day. Bet you got that one?
It's on the wall. It's on the wall, staying on there. Yeah. How did I know that? Been here too long.
This is a Resolution 11-2019, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Carrollton, Georgia, to declare the last Thursday in March each year as the Art Takeover Day in the city of Carrollton. Whereas, the arts are an important part of the community, and the city of Carrollton has a long and proud tradition of supporting the arts within the city, and whereas, in cooperation with the Carrollton Main Street, local businesses, and the University of West Georgia, for the past several years, the city has promoted an annual event commonly referred to as Art Takeover, and whereas, the Art Takeover features local artists from the city's surrounding areas and from UWG, allowing these artists to display their works throughout the downtown area, and whereas, in addition to the art displays, the Art Takeover also features local musicians in and around town, and whereas, the Art Takeover has been very successful and has proven to be very popular among artists, the general public, and local businesses, and whereas, the mayor and city council finds it in the public interest to continue to promote the arts and to continue to sponsor and promote the annual Art Takeover. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the Carrollton do hereby declare the last Thursday of March in each year will be Art Takeover Day in the city of Carrollton, Georgia. Adopted this sixth date of May 2019. Signed, Walt Hinesworth, Mayor.
Michael, I was under the impression you were gonna address us, but...
I'd like to.
Okay.
Thank you. I think it's a great honor for you all to make this proclamation for Art Takeover, and it is a collaboration of many groups that make Art Takeover the success that it is. We couldn't do it without the expertise and the handiwork of the Main Street personnel, without the people from the Center for the Arts. Their leadership and their cooperation and your kindness in helping to fund their efforts has really brought this program a long way in the four years that we've had this program. Four years ago, when we first put it on, we had 15 host locations on Adamson Square. This past year, we had 37 locations in and around Adamson. We started out here by the depot. We went all the way down to Downtown Gowns. We included the Presbyterian Church, the Center for the Arts, all the way over to Alley Cat and everything in between. And I have to say that the last Thursday of March, you never know what you're gonna get. This year, we had a Chamber of Commerce Day as far as the weather was concerned, and we had hundreds of people out in the streets. The artists loved it. The people attending it loved it. The merchants loved it. It was a total success. I just want to thank you for allowing us to put on this great event to help celebrate the arts in Carrollton. And we hope that the efforts that we make by doing this, by having visual artists as well as performing artists who take part in this, we think that this effort is helping to make Carrollton a better cultural center for the arts. If you just take this past weekend to heart, Friday night, there was a concert at the Center for the Arts where you had Presidio Brass with the Bowden High School Jazz Band and the Carrollton City School Jazz Band, performing at the Center for the Arts. Saturday night, there was a concert at Carrollton High School, which was Mozart Requiem, which was a collaboration of the University of West Georgia Choir, the choir from the United Methodist Church, Carrollton High School Choir, and a choir out of Atlanta, along with the Carol Symphony Orchestra and four soloists. And then last night, there was a world-renowned violinist at the Center for the Arts. Carrollton is doing things that big cities ordinarily do, and I think Art Takeover is a vehicle to help us launch and do more things. And I really thank you for recognizing this day every year and allowing us to do that, and we look forward to doing it for many years to come. Thank you.
Since this is a formal resolution as opposed to a proclamation, I think it would need a vote from the mayor and council to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 11-2019, Art Takeover Day.
Motion and second. All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number two is the bid award for Bankhead Highway Streetscape Phase One. Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several things I'd like to state about this project. This is the first phase of a project to beautify the corridor along Bankhead. That is an area of the city that has been lacking for no apparent reason. Growth has just not been coming in that area. This elected body made the decision to go forward with the design of streetscape for that area. It's been a lot of work. There's been a committee that represents the entire citizenry. There's a number of those committee members here I'd like to recognize. Mike Patterson, Michelle Morgan, Christina Davis, Chuck Connolly is on the committee, Erica Studdard, Rory Wojcik in Met Lane. I hope I've not forgotten anybody. There are other, Christina just cut her eyes like I missed somebody, but I...
I'm looking around.
Oh, it was Haley. Is that who you're pointing at? Okay. But, and there are many other people who were involved to try to, to try to make sure everybody was represented. There've been a lot of public meetings, and so this has been a long, complicated project, and it's had a lot of attention. I've spent quite a bit of time with traffic engineers myself, making, satisfying myself that they have created a design that will work. With that said, I'd like to talk about the bids. We went out to bid with an RFP. This is a very hot construction market. We received one bidder. We expected another bidder, and one of their key officers passed away just before the bids were due in. The bidder that we received is Baldwin Paving. They've done work for us before. They do excellent work. They did the Burkeville Boulevard project. That's one you may recall. The bid price is $2,670,506.98. I'd like to also remind you, we have a million and a half dollar grant from DOT to pay for a portion of this project. There are other pieces of this project that will not be bid, and let me explain that. There are utilities to be relocated. We estimate those at $300,000. The reason that's not bid is the utility companies move their utilities. So, if it is a buried power line or a power pole or a telephone line or whatever, Bell South moves their telephone line. So, we don't, that's not, or AT&amp;T now, that's not something that's bid out. Traffic signals are done exclusively by Bass Signal. There is landscaping to do that is estimated at $220,000. That will be bid. That will come back to you. There's also the desire on some people's part to do decorative lighting. That would be another half million dollars. But for tonight, if you choose to go forward to this project, the bid is Baldwin Paving at the price of $2,670,506.98. If you have questions about the bid, Tommy Holland is here to address them. If you have questions about how the project was run, the design and the communication with the public, Erica Studdard is here to address that. Thank you.
Tim, one of the beautiful things about our job here as councilmen is that you're either gonna love us or you're gonna hate us. Sometimes we're gonna say things that you're gonna think are just wonderful, and sometimes we're gonna say things that you're gonna think we're an idiot over. Tonight, I have to say something that's on my heart about this project, and I'd be remiss if I didn't. I wish, in hindsight, and it may not, hindsight might not even be the appropriate word because now could be hindsight. I wish we had done an actual, real-world test run of this project before we spent the money and before we broke ground. I would like to propose to the council tonight that we bring in some concrete barriers, and we could borrow those from Georgia DOT or whomever, to test this out, to give the road a temporary road diet, to see how this is gonna flow and to see how our citizens will react to it. Otherwise, we're moving too fast, too soon, and we're gonna, we could, this could, you know, I'm all about Carrollton's legacy. We've done a lot of legacy projects since I've been here for 20 years, and I want this to be another legacy project. But I still want to move carefully, and I want to move in a smart way, and I want to move in a thoughtful way with the consideration of all of our citizens. And I know some people are very upset about this project, but others are happy. You can't always make everybody happy. But I would like to see an actual, real-world test run with concrete barricades put in place so we can test this out first because we're talking about one of the main arteries of our city shrinking down. And already, in my experience here, I think we have a traffic issue here, and this may add to our traffic issue. I say may add to our traffic issue because I want to be as fair as possible to both sides, those who are in favor of it, those who are against it. And the only way to look at everything fairly is to test it out first, to give both sides a time to air their grievances and then to experiment with it. And I think experimentation could be a lot of fun. So, my, I would like to make a motion that we table this and we experiment a little bit more and test a little bit more, maybe get the Georgia DOT involved in this as well, other traffic engineers in addition to our, and I'm sorry, I know it's a hot topic, but other traffic engineers in addition to our traffic engineers, let's find other cities who, and maybe you've done this, other cities who have done this, let's present this to the people to make sure we're moving in a smart and conducive direction for the traffic flow of our city. A lot of our jobs aren't nice out there now. This may add to their frustration, and I don't want to see anything escalate into something that could become a common problem. Then, how do we pull all this up and start all over again? So, my thing is, this is too much, too fast, too soon. Thank you, everybody. Oh, I'm Gerald Byrd, by the way.
Oh, I'm not here to try to sell anybody on this project. I do want to tell you that the traffic was analyzed to death and beat to death, and I spent a lot of time with those folks myself. You know, I wanted a level of comfort that they had done their job, and I really believe that they have, and I completely understand what you're suggesting. But I do want to make clear that we put a lot of time in this, a lot of work in, and a lot of well-qualified people studied that issue, and, you know, I just want to be clear about that. Thank you.
I spent the weekend looking at the plans, Darrell, and first time I'd really got a chance to see them, other than what we had scattered around City Hall. It's a very large plan. Comes out to about $1,000 a running foot, which a regular road for a subdivision now is about $450 a running foot. I'm not in favor of this project, and I'm sorry, but I'm just not. But I'm also gonna have to recuse myself from this issue, and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tem, Jim Waters.
All right. So, I think we need a second on your motion to turn the meeting over.
No, no, no. There's a motion.
Oh, to table. I'm sorry.
See if there's a second for that.
All right. We got a motion. Is there a second for Gerald's motion? Without a second, his motion fails.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion that we accept the bid from Baldwin Paving Company for $2,670,506.98.
What's that? Okay.
I made, I made a motion. It can be second.
Then you can open it up. All right. Got a motion and a second. Open up for discussion.
Discussion by the people or discussion by whom? Us?
Anybody.
Oh. I mean, I'm not totally against this. I just think we need to wait, and we need to be as prudent as possible to move as carefully as possible before doing this. And that concludes my argument.
I just wanna say one thing. I know that, uh, I hear your concerns, Gerald, and we, as a committee and with a lot of other staff, have spent almost three years working on this project, analyzing it, having public, um, meetings, having listening sessions to be able to be sure, talking with the business owners in that area with, um, professionals in a lot of different areas. And I feel confident that those experts in those areas have been able to provide that input, and, um, I think the city has done their due diligence in listening to those concerns.
Uh, Councilman Wojcik, you know, I'm not a fan of data and I'm not a, not a fan of research. I'm a fan, fan of hands-on, real-life studies, and, uh, we can talk all day long about data and research and people's expertise, but until we actually touch the actual tangible things and actually try to make these things flow, all we're doing is speculating. So your argument and everybody else's argument up here who's voting in favor of this is all speculative, and mine may be too, but I'm saying we need to experiment first and test run this before we move forward, because this is something that's gonna be indelible, uh, something that's gonna, we're actually reversing history by doing this. We're reversing the history of this town, the layout of this town, uh, which could be detrimental to our town. And people are, I think what I'm gonna do, and others may do it as well, when I'm in a hurry, I'm not gonna take that route. I'm gonna go around the bypass. I'm just keeping it real. When I'm in a hurry, I don't wanna be slowed down.
Any other?
I just, I just wanted to thank the other members of the, the committee, 'cause they were not paid. They were very diligent. They attended all the meetings, we would meet for once a month. Um, that would be Ms. Debbie, Ms. Debbie Neal, um, again, Mike Patterson, that was earlier recognized, um, former Commissioner Michelle Morgan, John Salmon. Um, we really appreciate his assistance. Sandra Houston did a great job. Um, school board member David Godwin, and again, I believe we've already mentioned Christina Davis and Luke Wojcik. So, and Andy Kemp from the Chamber of Commerce, he assisted tremendously.
And I reflect that too, and I appreciate them too, but that still doesn't mean it's gonna work.
Can I quickly address the city council? Dr. Brent Harris, US Med Clinic. I just heard, uh, Rory Wojcik said that he addressed a lot of the business owners on Bankhead Highway about this project. Can you guys verbally give me a vote for those in favor and those against along the entire corridor as far as business owners? He, he, he mentioned that he, they talked, the, the committee spoke with all the business owners along the entire corridor, and so I would assume that the city has a list of business owners along that entire corridor, those in favor of it and those opposed. So I wonder if you could share the data on that.
Harris, I don't have that, but we've talked to all the business owners, so.
When they do something like a sidewalk, you don't often send a vote that every single landowner has passed through it. And in this case, we address every single person that's on the highway that has, that has a parking there. There are many different sidewalks that we're meeting.
Right.
There were others that, um, you have to be the first. I think, I think you're asking if there was a vote.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering.
Consensus, that's, would that be a...
No, I've, I've heard that you guys have met with all the business owners along that corridor, and my concern is that you met with anybody that showed up at one of the meetings. Most business owners did not know about the meetings, 'cause I, I never received anything in the mail until after those meetings that occurred at my clinic locations. I, I did.
Hey, Ms. Dr. Harris, you might have not received anything, but I promise we sent them out to all the business owners. I promise you about that. We also sent...
So the percentage of businesses that you guys met with, how many percentage-wise along the corridor do you guys think you discussed this with?
I'll let Ms. Stutter address that if she wants to, but she doesn't have to.
She also addressed how many yeses and how many no's. I think, I, see, I...
So I mean, maybe there's a hundred... I guess how many, how many businesses are along the corridor? Does anybody know that? How many businesses along the corridor? How many businesses are there along the corridor? There's over a hundred.
Thirty or thirty-five.
This, this phase, this phase.
Um, yes, we have met with all the businesses. We also hand-delivered notices for our meetings. We also mailed notices. Uh, we've also met with business owners, and he is absolutely right. We don't have 100% buy-in on this, but we do have a really good consensus. We are continuing to work with property owners. We will continue to work with property owners. We're gonna try to make this as easy on them as possible. We do recognize it's a construction project. Um, I do have a list of all the businesses. I don't have it in my head because there's a lot of business owners that we've met with.
Ms. Stutter, can I interrupt? I wanna say this, too. We don't have complete buy-in on the green belt. There are still plenty of people in this town who don't like the green belt, believe it or not. So had we said, "Let's take a vote on the green belt," there've been probably a lot of people saying, "I don't want the green belt." Coming through my yard next to my yard.
It's invisible all the time. The green belt is off the beaten path.
I'm just, I'm just talking about, the issue was that you can't have complete buy-in. That's all I'm saying. You're not gonna have complete buy-in on anything.
And Dr. Harris, that's not my issue. The issue is, we don't need to do this right now. Not without, we don't, we don't...
I, I think your idea of blockading the road to test it on a three lanes with two directional and one center lane is a brilliant idea.
Wait, say that again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Byrd, I think it's a brilliant idea. I, I'm surprised you didn't get a second opinion up there on the city council when you're talking about a major redevelopment of our...
'Cause they're trying to rush it.
A, a major arterial coming into the...
Wait, hold on, hold on. Please, Mr. Byrd, we're not trying to rush it. It's been going on for three years.
Had your turn, I had my turn.
Hey, guys, one at a time. Gerald, go ahead.
I just didn't know if, if anybody up here had a percentage of all, of all the businesses they talked to, if they could just give me a rough percentage of people that are for it versus against it, just the business owners along Bankhead. I don't, personally don't know any other ones that are for it except two. So.
I was at a, I was at a meeting, and I, I would say it was 55, 45 for it, for the people that attended.
I think you would say that, but that's not a fact. I think Carolyn Gray has something to say. I thought we were talking about facts here. Mm-hmm. But that wasn't a rendering of what the, what the setbacks were gonna look like. That was just a rendering of what the street could possibly look like.
Uh, my question is, um, the description kinda defies logic, 'cause it's narrowing that street, but I was wondering if there is a, an artist's rendering of what the project is going to look like when it's completed.
See, there's no cars out there on that, one car, two cars. Where's the traffic? Oh, 'cause I forgot. Nobody's gonna use that street anymore.
All right, I'm gonna close discussion on this topic, and we've got a motion and a second, so, uh, we can move to vote. All those in favor of the bid award for the Bankhead Highway Streetscape Project Phase One, all those, alls in favor. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, equipment purchase, Parks and Rec Department. Mr. Peter.
Thank you, mayor and council. We have tonight on the agenda, the retractable roof motors at Lake Shore Pool. The system is 18 years old and was put in in 2001. This is a capital items request that was presented at last year's budget retreat and approved in the fiscal year 1819 budget. Several of the panels that you see are inoperable due to bad motors and worn-out tracks. The proposal you have before you is to replace 30 motors, one on each panel, which includes gaskets, gears, hardware, and glides on which the panels move up and down. The work would be performed by Open Air, who originally installed them back in 2001. We attempted to get another bid from a company to get a better price, but as you saw in your packet, they expressed to us when we originally met, it would cost around $150,000 for them to do. The original quote that you have was $85,830. The current price to complete the project by Open Air is $89,500 due to an increase in the price of the motors. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And I just wanna say, Peter and I have talked at length about this. We've sent our best mechanics over there to try to devise other ways to repair this. Frankly, no local company, no company in the States will touch it. It's a proprietary product from Canada. Uh, there's liability if it's done wrong. Panels could fall, tracks could fail, so, uh, it's a lot of money. We've wrestled with this, uh, every way in the world, and frankly, this is the least expensive, uh, solution, and it, it has gotta be fixed. So we put it off as long as we can, and again, I've put some very talented mechanics over there that really don't have a better solution. It's one of those things, as we say, it is what it is.
So Peter, the life of, of this system, will it be, the last one was 18 years. I think we put it in, uh, in 2001.
2001, correct.
According to my records. Um, so the, would the life of this one be another 18 years?
Eighteen to 20 years, correct.
Eighteen to 20 years.
Any more discussion?
Come make, I make a motion, we approve the equipment purchase for the Parks and Rec Department, uh, an auditorium retractable roof.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Oh. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, item number four, equipment purchase, Public Works. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, there were, uh, budgeted in this year's budget, two mini excavators. These are those small, little track hoes. Uh, they weigh about 12,000 pounds each, and these are under 50 horsepower. Uh, one has a rock breaker, the other has a thumb, for those of you familiar with this kind of equipment. We're trying to get away from rubber-tired backhoes. They tear, I mean, we'll still have some, but they tear up yards more when you have to work in somebody's yard. These little excavators are easier to haul. They haul on a lighter trailer. We've used them for years, uh, in a previous life. Mike is here to address any questions you'd have about his need for these. Uh, we took bids, we got three different bids. One from United Rentals for a Takahuchi machine, one from Yancey Brothers for Caterpillar 305, and one from Flint Construction and Forestry for John Deere. The low bid was Takahuchi, but for 1,100 more dollars, we can have Caterpillar. My, I, I tell people all the time, I don't run these things, but I pay the bills on them, and, uh, Caterpillar is hard to beat, John Deere is hard to beat. Uh, we're recommending that we go with the, with the Caterpillar from Yancey Brothers for $120,806. Again, that's for two excavators. If you want specific information about the need, Mike Green is here to address that.
Anybody got any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, got a second?
Second. Yancey.
Yancey.
So do I need to say that, Chuck?
Recommendation was for the Yancey Brothers, so the motion would be to accept the staff's recommendation.
So have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Vehicle purchase, sanitation department. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for a, uh, half-ton, four-wheel-drive pickup truck. Uh, I just wanna make you aware of a few things here. First, this was, there was equipment budgeted, this was not the equipment. So you have money in the budget, you're not amending the budget, there was some equipment that wasn't bought. Mike had an engine fail in a pickup truck, uh, in the sanitation department, and the truck's just gone and it's time to replace it. I want you to know why Tony is involved. Tony does the bids on all vehicles unless they are public safety. The reason for that is in years past, we would have Kent taking bids for the rec department and maybe Mike taking bids for Public Works, and they'd be getting separate, different prices from the same company for the same truck, and it confused the car dealers and it confused everybody. So we run all vehicle purchases through Tony, 'cause he, he's an expert in that field. But with that said, if you wanna know how the bids were done, Tony is here. Uh, if you wanna know more about the need for the truck, Mike is here, and, uh, y'all bear with me. City staff request you approve the purchase of one half-ton extended cab, four-wheel-drive truck from Scott Evans Dodge in the amount of $25,173, and it'll be paid for out of the sanitation department budget. Thank you.
Got a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Item number six, farmer's market pavilion.
Uh, this is to, um, allocate funds for a farmer's market to, to be built. Um, the plan is for city staff to work with the Cotton Mill Farmer's Market, um, to build a structure that can create a home for the farmer's market. They will find a, staff will look for a location, um, for that, preferably downtown. Um, but it, this, this, um, this allocation is just to, uh, set aside the money, not to actually choose the location or the size or what it'll look like. And that can then be brought, once that's, once all of those details have been figured out, brought forward to the mayor and council afterwards. Yeah, exactly. It's not just a pavilion that'll get used once a week, um, every, every week. It will be, um, available as just another, uh, structure that can be rented for other, other, um, events or functions. And what you'll see is, when folks come down to the, to the farmer's market, they don't just go and then leave. What you'll see is folks coming in, um, spending their afternoon, um, spending their dollars in our downtown, which is, um, it's extremely important to do.
So Rory, are you saying that we're not voting tonight on a bona fide plan for the farmer's market, but instead we're giving staff permission to go into discussions and seeking a place to have the, the farmer's market?
That's correct, and allocating funds for that pavilion.
And, okay, and how much are we allocating for the, I'm looking now, but I don't know...
Fifty thousand, Gerald.
Fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't know for sure that it would be where we had discussed?
No, and we'd be glad to bring that back to you if you wanna, if you wanna be able to approve that when the time comes. We have had meetings with, uh, Brian, and, uh, Erica's been working on, uh, the details of, you know, what we think would be best for this project, and then we, we've traded some phone calls, but, you know, we, we really kinda wanted to make sure we met their needs and met their needs for a location, and, uh, and again, if you wanna see this before it is approved, we certainly will bring it back to you.
So it's not the old City Hall parking lot, man? Now is, uh, Tanner, it's near Tanner.
No, we don't have a location.
Oh, I know we talked about City Hall, old City Hall parking lot before.
That, that is one of the options, yes.
What I'd like, what I'd like to request, we, we had a good meeting with, um, Erica and Tim, and that essentially, it sounds like you're talking about a budget allocation and that at some point...
You get closer to them, I seriously have lost my hearing.
Brian Hager, I live at 2314 Pleasant Ridge Road, um, in Carroll County, and, um, I'm president of Cotton Mill Farmer's Market. Our goal would be maybe at a work session to come back to you with options on what could work once we've identified viable options with the city staff. At that point, to get full input, um, on what would work for everybody's benefit.
And Brian, you've helped me address some of the issues over in the food desert before, so could we take into consideration those people who cannot, who, who, those people who have difficulty in having access to fresh fruits and vegetables when we move forward with this? And I'll be more in favor of voting for it if we, 'cause I'm gonna create a whole lot of noise if y'all don't. Uh, but I'll be more in favor of voting for it if you take them into consideration, as I know you will. You and that committee that you just spoke of.
Yeah, and we've, we've been working with Tanner on their Get Healthy, Live Well system to, um, and with, uh, Carrollton Housing Authority, um, on a variety of options to get people, make food accessible to folks.
What about this, Brian? When I was a kid, we had a truck that came through, and I think it might've been a subsidiary or, I don't know if that's the right word, a disciple from the produce market downtown. They would come through the housing projects where I grew up, and they would honk the horn, and we would go out and buy fruits and vegetables from them. Wouldn't it be neat to have some type of a, of a mobile, even with, what's the word for the food that's left over at the end of the day? They have a word for that. They have a word for that.
Well, we do a harvest share program where the food that's left over from the market, we donate to local charities, to the Domestic Violence Shelter, Open Hands, folks like that.
Okay, I was about to say, it'd be neat to maybe drive through some of those neighborhoods, and-
There have been some interesting projects like that trialed around the state, and I could talk with you about that later, if you'd like.
Anything I can do to support that, please let me know, even if I have to drive the truck.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Brian? All right, so we have a, we got a motion?
Make a motion that we allocate fifty thousand dollars for our, for our budget for the purpose of building a farmer's market pavilion. And the final recommendation be brought before the mayor and council for approval.
All right, we have a motion, have a second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, item number six, farmer's market pavilion, fifty thousand dollar allocation, coming back to us later today. Please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you very much. Item number seven is right of way abandonment. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got three areas, and Tommy Holland's going to give you the detail on it, but three areas where there is city right of way for roads, frankly, two of them, we didn't even know the right of way was there, it's been abandoned so long. But the first one is Henry Burson Drive. That is a dead end road that extended off Dixie down into where the Tanner's building its new high-rise building across from the main hospital. Obviously, that property is no longer a city street and needs to be abandoned, and to go back to Tanner. The other's a section of Longview near North, North Acoch behind Tanner Groceries, and then the other is the end of Crescent Drive over on Lake Carroll. Tommy will give you the specifics.
And that pretty much covers specifics, but at the same time, we did get requests for these three locations, and it being city property requires a vote for the mayor and council to consider abandoning the property, and the city attorney prepared that one resolution to cover the three exhibits, and exhibit, exhibit one does cover the Henry Burson area, and this will allow Tanner to combine all their property, and it's no longer needed in the city right of way. The exhibit two, I believe, was Dr. James Huff. It actually dead ends at his property. I don't know if you're familiar with Crescent Drive or not, but it never was extended as far as the right of way was platted. So Dr. Huff has been maintaining this property for probably twenty, thirty years, I'm not sure. He's, he's here if you have any questions about that, but it, right where his driveway is actually the brick, if you'll notice on the plaid, it actually shows the right of way going well beyond that. So this is something that was never developed. And then the third exhibit C is actually a part of Longview Street. I would have never guessed this was Longview Street until the city attorney pulled the plats, and I saw it on the plaid, but this is actually off of North Acoch extending up to the railroad track, close behind Tanner Grocery, and I think that's C.C. Dixon used to be there, United Refrigeration is right there. But just request your approval of resolution to abandon the right of way for these three streets.
So abandoning, we're abandoning the right of way?
Yes, this is actually authorizing the city manager to actually make the official documentation. I think the city attorney might can clarify it a little better on that.
Yeah, the mayor and council, if you determine that right of way that was given to the city for public roads is no longer needed for that purpose, technically, the mayor and council will have to abandon that property, and that's what this resolution does. And then it authorizes the city manager to move forward with disposing of the property. And then there's, the statute provides how you go about disposing of the property. So this resolution would abandon the right of way and give the city manager the ability to move forward under the statute and dispose of the property, sell the property.
So these streets will no longer be ours to maintain, et cetera. Is that property still owned by, what's his name? Is it Wayne Seabolt, who, the property that's on the street?
Actually, Patricia Robinson, I think, is the property owner. If you'll notice on the-
From Bowden, Patricia Robinson from Bowden? She from Bowden?
I think so.
It's not that Patricia, okay.
Not sure. Her physical address there at the property is three oh two, three oh two North Acoch Street, but if you'll notice, she actually has property on both sides of it, so it kind of splits, and this will allow her to expand her commercial operation, or parking, or anything in that area.
Okay, so she's still in operation there, Patricia Robinson in?
I think United Refrigeration is.
Mm-hmm. Brian, that area might be something y'all want to look into, with that farmer's market, a nice meal area with all those old cabins out there, wouldn't that be cool? We kind of looked at that about maybe five, six years ago. Were you around when we did that? Oh, leaching and all that, oh.
Tommy, the Longview Street property, I mean, the way I'm looking at it, there's a little triangle to the right of the road, is that right?
Yes.
That actually goes-
Splits her property. She actually owns that little section-
To the right of it?
On both sides.
Why was that street cut off? I mean, was it segregation or something that did that? What did that?
The only thing I can figure-
Racism?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm serious, what did that?
I think when they abandoned the school out there, Gerald. Used to go all the way through to Maple Street.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was something else.
I'm quite old enough to remember, I would have never guessed it was-
I remember.
To be clear, though, if you went out there and looked, you wouldn't know there was a street there, just because it's drawn on paper, there's no street there, it just looks like their parking lot. This is property that has, gives the appearance that they already own it, we're just cleaning up a deed. Similarly, at Crescent, it looks like Dr. Huff's yard. The only one that actually existed is a street since, in the fifteen years I've been here, is Henry Burson. And obviously, the buildings that it led to no longer exist, and Tanner needs that to finish their project.
Any more questions? Have a motion, we approve.
Second. Did you make the motion?
I made the motion, we approve.
Yeah, I had second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Board appointment, Historic Preservation Commission, Ms. Studdard.
The final item on your agenda are two board appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission. Both Allison Tanner and Jaclyn Dost have terms that expired on May first, two thousand nineteen. Our UDO requires that you can only serve two terms on this particular commission, so it is a little different than some of our other commissions. They have served well and contributed significantly to the Historic Preservation Commission, but it is time to make that replacement. At this time, we are requesting that the mayor and council appoint Dr. Thomas Ford and Ms. Allison Nally Rosborough to the commission during this meeting. Dr. Ford resides in the Historic District. He's enthusiastic about history, and he has expressed a desire to serve. As well, Ms. Rosborough, she's also passionate about historic preservation, and she has worked with the State Preservation Office, so I think both would be assets to the commission. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Anybody got any questions?
I apologize, I wasn't listening. But you don't have to repeat it, I'll read it. Okay, thank you. Okay, good, thank you.
Make a motion, we approve.
So we don't know, we don't, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We don't know these people? You don't know them? Me neither.
I know Allison, she's great.
Don't we have, what are those things called, resumes for these people? Do we not have resumes?
I sent the, I passed along Allison's resume and bio that she'd passed along to-
We, yeah, Rory, I think, did provide that, and then I can, I can get Dr. Thomas Ford's resume from you. We don't traditionally include those in commission appointments, but we can certainly start doing that.
Something you want, Gerald?
Well, let me ask you this, like, what, tell us, for dumb people like me, like, what do they do?
So the Historic Preservation Commission, their primary role is to approve certificates of appropriateness. So if you're making any substantive change to a property in the Historic District, it has to get a COA, which is a certificate of appropriateness, prior to getting a building permit. Things that would be required to have a COA would be if you were making an addition to a home or a commercial business. If it is a commercial business, which we do have some in the Historic District, signage is also, also comes into play, if you're changing out the windows. So really, any substantive change to the structure itself would require a COA. The Preservation Commission reviews those prior to the issuance of a building permit.
So what, what other seats are coming up on this board anytime soon? Because I, I mean, I'm looking at Carolyn Gray back there, I mean, she is a, she just raised her hand. Carolyn, does this sound like something you would like?
Yes.
Right, she, didn't you work for, like, Walt Disney and all that stuff, and, right? Right. She, she will be an awesome, and I'm not saying bump these other people off, but for the future, if we could put this in our records, let's, I would like to nominate Carolyn Gray, who is the most historical, that sounds bad, because it makes you sound like you're old, you're not old, but she loves history more than anybody else I know, and she's a walking history book, and she can bring a fresh perspective that's much needed, and a diverse perspective that's much needed in this city. So that way, we don't just have one side of the coin, we have both sides of the coin, and we're fair, we look fair, and we look transparent. I'm rambling, but y'all get what I'm talking about. So next time, let's, Carolyn Gray, and you live in the city limits now? You moved from somewhere else to here?
Well, I used to live in the town of-
You came to see me, I think, in two thousand two?
I live in Carrollton, two thousand nine. I live in Carrollton, I live here.
Well, I just think it would be a lot of fun to have you here at city hall.
Gerald, are you satisfied with appointments we have and going forward?
Yeah, but let's, let's keep a feather in our hat to, oh, who is that now? Who's on? So we have one, we won't call her, it's possible somebody on that. So Carolyn, this time, I just got, stopped calling you Carolyn, but Mrs. Gray, this time next year, Ms. Gray, this time next year, about April, whoever's in this seat or these seats, could you please, could we please contact Carolyn Gray as my recommendation? I'm not sure if that city charter will allow me to, this far in advance.
Well, when we get ready to appoint the new members, you can open the floor for nominations, and at that time, you can nominate Ms. Gray.
Okay, you mean back in, I mean, up in twenty twenty?
Well, I'm not sure when the term expires.
Oh, it's five one twenty. Matt is so good over there. See, he does his homework, that's good, on something. I'm playing with him, Matt. But yeah, five one twenty.
So you happy with what we're doing?
Yeah, let's, I don't know these people, so I'm kind of, I feel kind of weird voting on people, voting for people I don't know, and I think that's part of what's wrong with our country today. But I, I mean, I'm just talking, thinking, I'm getting old, and the older I get, the more I'm going to keep saying stuff like this, but.
Somebody remind me, do we have a motion and a second?
Whether I vote for them or not, they're going to get it anyway, so I'm, let's just move.
Do we have a motion and a second on this? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, all opposed?
Because I don't know them, I'm sorry.
Item number nine, announce.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I did. Oh, item number nine is what? Oh, I'm sorry, man, you go first. I would like, this is a very serious matter, even though everything we talked about up here has been serious, and I want you to know that I take the business of the city very, very seriously, and I try my best to be fair, and to look at all sides of things without any partiality or favor, because I put my hand on that Bible up here two years ago. But there's a young man by the name of Chase McDaniel, who was diagnosed with lymphoma cancer. My Facebook page has become a platform for us to obtain things, to help his family in this new diagnosis for him. I spent my day yesterday at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta with Chase and his family, and I'm asking everyone to pray for him, and you can log on to my Facebook page, and there's a link there if you want to offer anything to the family to help them out. I was walking the square today, and three families actually stopped me on the square and told me they know of other children there at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta who have cancer also. So I'm asking you to keep those people in your thoughts, your prayers, your meditation, and if you could log on to my Facebook page and find out ways that we can help Chase and his family through this struggle, that would be great. So thank you all.
I just want to say, for those that don't know, this is city council member, Roy Rojack's last city council member, meeting, excuse me. He represents Ward Two. If you think of the city of Carrollton as a circle or a pie, he would represent what we would refer to as the northeast quadrant. And Roy, I just want to tell you, over the last three years, you've, I've treasured your friendship, you've offered incredible ideas, being on city council. Some things we agree with, some things we didn't, I think we agree most of the time, but I, I want to just tell you publicly, I appreciate you running, it's hard to run elections, and you've run three elections, to only be here for, for one term. I appreciate you deciding to do that. I think the city is, is in a better place because of you. I remember I was, I was coached by Ben Scott, who was the coach who followed Coach Grisham, and he always said, you always want to leave a place better than you found it, and I think you've done that. And so my hat's off to you, and I, good luck in your future endeavors, and, and thank you for your service, and I mean that heart hardly, and I know that's a cliche, but I mean it sincerely, so thank you.
I didn't think I'd be actually emotional about this, but I want to say thank you to everybody up here. Your, working with you guys have been, has been absolutely amazing for me personally, being able to represent the city in various ways has been something that I've thoroughly enjoyed doing, and it's changed me completely, hopefully for the better. But I cherish the years that I've spent here, the city staff has always been welcome, or has always welcomed me coming into their offices and asking all the questions that I ask, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's meant, meant a lot.
Well, I'll kind of second what Matt said, you will definitely be missed up here, and I've really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you, and this guy is, is passionate, if he's not anything else, and like Matt said, he and I don't agree on everything, but man, he puts up a good argument for everything that he is, that he's for, and he's, he's definitely swayed me on several things as well, so you will be missed, and I've really enjoyed working with you, and let's, let's keep in touch. By me to Charleston.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Rory on his new endeavors. I know he'll do well where he goes. And to back up the recusal that I made on the Bankhead Project is because my family owns property there, and it's been explained to me pretty prevalently the last year and a half, that I need to recuse myself from things that we have an interest in. So I will do better going forward, and Rory, good luck, and it's been a pleasure.
Rory, I would like to say too, that it's been a pleasure having you up here, and a pleasure having a young person in the midst of the council, and a pleasure too, seeing your, or hearing your perspective on different issues, and your innovative ideas, and your desire to take us to the next level with our branding, and solar energy, and all those desire to take us to the next level with our branding, and solar energy, and all those projects, and with a, I guess, respect for the environment as well, so I thank you for that, and you're, and celebrating birthdays with me, and we became friends too, we might fight, but at the end, we hit our gloves together, we're friends, so thank you, I appreciate you Rory.
First, to Rory, I wish you the very best, you brought a lot to the table here, I've enjoyed working with you, you're, you're proof that it's good to have different ideas, we didn't always see eye to eye, but we usually came to a consensus, and I really wish you the very best, I know you're gonna do well, I want to thank the folks that put on Mayfest, Erica and Andy and all the staff, and then Public Works also, and Public Safety, the firemen and the police are always out there, making sure everybody's safe, and what did you just, who is that?
The rec department.
The rec department, oh gosh, yes, so just everybody that had a hand in that, Peter, thank you, but it was, it was really, it was quite good and enjoyed it, but thank you.
Is there any more business coming? Is there any more business come before this body? Have a motion we adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second. We are adjourned.